Here she is.
All right, everybody, welcome to the city council meeting for the city of Bonnie Lake for September 12th, 2023. Right now, we do not have a quorum, so would anybody move for a... Oh, we do, yes. We do, because we have two. My mistake on that.
People are coming.
Here we go.
It's a little long.
You did one more.
The only CDC is supposed to be the other.
All right, with everybody settled, let's salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
I'm here.
Councilmember Evans.
He's on his way.
He's on his way, yep.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLehman.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Well, do we or do we not have an agenda modification?
Which one?
Yeah, we're good. Okay, we're good?
Executive session?
Oh, very good. Okay, so we don't have an agenda modification, so we do have an appointment, Madam Clerk.
This is Agenda Bill 23-134, motion M23-134. Fair, serve as police chief.
Do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay, very good. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none. Oh, okay, no, I'm sorry. Councilmember Evans.
I want to say, you know, you may want to record this, make this for the record. Mr. Mayor, you did an amazing job and made a great choice here.
Oh.
So, I know I probably haven't said that in the last couple of years.
I've fallen out of my seat.
But I had an opportunity to meet with, I'm going to say Chief Berry. Even if it's just through Edgewood right now, it's still the proper title, and outstanding guy, I think he's going to fit in very well with the philosophy we here have as a council and as a community. I know you had some tough choices to make, and I think either one would have been, you know, a great asset to the city in different ways, but I think with Chief Berry coming on board, I think we're going to have, get us to that next level that we need in community policing, in just public interaction. I'm so excited to have him on board and start working with. I'm heartbroken because I won't be able to work with him, but for a couple of months, but I promise we'll do some work in the community together after that, so.
Oh.
Great job on that, thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Evans. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would just second what Councilmember Evans had to say. A great choice, excited to see everything move forward. Like I said, I think we had two great candidates, for sure, probably more, but I think the right person was chosen, and excited for him to take on that position and leadership role. Thank you.
Okay, and Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to have Chief Berry amongst our group here, has extensive background, was a tough decision to decide on which one to have, but he has the background we need, he has some different expertise to bring to our Bonnie Lake. His family is from Bonnie Lake, was wife's school district for 12 years at least, I believe it is anyway, so they know the city, know what's going on here and what we're facing from the students to adults, so he'll be a good addition to us, and I'm looking forward to working with him.
Well, you do know he is a foreigner and that his actual postal address is Buckley.
I know that. He drives through Bonnie Lake.
There you go.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the matter? All righty, so let's go move forward with the motion. For the motion to confirm Mark Berry as, for the appointment as Bonnie Lake Police Chief, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Looks like we have an unanimous, unanimous appointment, thank you very much.
And thank you very much, Chief.
And Mayor, if I might, on the September 26th meeting, will be the official swearing-in at the city council. That sounds good. All righty. Okay, let's move on, and we have, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so we will move on to citizen commentary. All right, this is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those who are attending virtually. You'll need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen and heard. We will start with those who are here in person first and move to virtual comments afterwards. Anybody who is present and wishes to speak, you will have five minutes, and please state your name and address when you come up to the dials.
This is why you...
In the beginning. Council Mayor, I'm Dan Decker, past council member, live at 2170 Street, East Bonnie Lake, Washington. If I were someone, I would look really hard at information being presented today. WAC 390-18-400, date, use of the terms reelect, retain, and return. The word incumbent, see Black Law Dictionary, 691, 5th Edition, 1979. See also DE 90-47, December 18th, 1990, Delaware Supreme Court, EE. RCW 29A 84720, officers, violations generally. Also, it's been noticed that someone has been verbally violent towards women residents of the city of Bonnie Lake. This act of bullying citizens has been noticed, is also being looked at as a violation of their position. Shame on you, whoever you might be. New subject. Someone took the monument located at the Highway 410 as we enter the city of Bonnie Lake. Someone appeared to think it was funny. I say this because the person was laughing about the monument being stolen. About 34 years ago, when the monument was created, it cost about $50,000. If it could be replaced, which it probably won't be able to be replaced, the cost would be about $200,000 in today's market. I know the police don't think this theft of the monument is funny, and they're looking for that theft, the thieves that took it. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Do we have anybody else for the good of the mor- order who is present? Okay, so we will now start the citizen commentary that is virtual. Anybody who is virtual, again, you will have five minutes, and please state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will now, or the city will now disable all video and microphone for those who are attending virtually, and we'll move on to committee reports. Can we hear from the finance committee, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee met today, 5:00 o'clock upstairs. We approved our minutes, we had a personnel update, we had a discussion, or an update, rather, in regards to the rec program, and we had a discussion action item for motion M23-134, which is the MOU with MRAC that's before us this evening.
Okay.
That'll be under, I think, finance, Kansas issues.
Yeah. And is that all?
That is all.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Can we move to Community Development Committee, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Community Development Committee did have a meeting. We had the deputy mayor stand in for our members, so we had a full complement of three at that meeting. Items included is discussion items, which such as Resolution 3177, which we actually did that same night when we came back down here, so we already passed that one with the professional services agreement. Another item was Resolution 3176, Professional Services Agreement for your sewer infiltration and inflow investigation design services. That's basically your sewer pipes, making sure they're in, there's integrity there, where we're not getting, you know, a river, our streams flowing into the system, because we're charged by the amount that goes down to some, or so you want to make sure as much as possible that you fix all those cracks and stuff, so they're going to do investigations on those, as they always do, kind of an ongoing maintenance, kind of an issue there. Also, Resolution 3179, which is a purchase of the tractor mower and the street department, and that one has a little nuance to it, I think we should pull that one from the consent agenda, just to talk about it for a moment. I, with, the committee was fully supportive of it, but we were on a little bit of a different page when we went through the committee, so maybe it's appropriate for the full council to be informed of exactly what the issues are there, make sure we're on the same page with that. Also, Resolution with the Allen York Park Playground installation, that's going to come up in the future council workshop for more discussion on possible ways to make that happen or not, and various open discussions included mainly around the restricted parking areas that the city's still modifying, and you guys are still working on that, apparently, as we place those no, no parking, restricted parking, permit parking things, there's some nuances of that that we went through with several of the interested homeowners in the areas, that those are effective. That was our items for that evening.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Is the issue that you're speaking about, is that on tonight's consent agenda?
It is, yeah, there's a couple of modifications. I would like, when we get down there, while, you know, move them off the consent as per usual. Item G.
Item G, thank you. All right, Public Safety Committee.
All right, evening, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety met today at 3:30, and so we discussed that there's an increase in DUI and traffic citations this month. Also, there was 305 court hearings and 20, 21 arraignments. We also discussed the exercise for the Lahar, and just talking about mask care and trying to figure out site identification for shelter and things like that. We discussed satellite phones having just arrived, and that we are finding a way to be able to communicate when there's loss of communication with cellular service. We also discussed the cooling system at the senior center. We then had a very lively and wonderful discussion with quite a few citizens, actually, in regards to derelict homes and just abeyments, and needing the possibility for more funds to be able to take care of these, basically rundown homes, just around Bonnie Lake and things like that. And so citizens were very actively engaged, talking with us, giving us ideas, as well as the members on the Public Safety Committee. We also discussed shortly Resolution 3180, that is an interagency agreement between Washington State Administrative Office of the Courts and Bonnie Lake Municipal Court, to be able to provide more services to either the hearing impaired or for translation services and things like that, and I believe that is on the consent agenda tonight. Our next meeting is going to be October 10th, 1010, and the public is welcome to join us.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. It's a pleasure hearing from you.
Good job.
Yes.
Thanks.
First one.
Got your back. Okay, well, let's move on. I believe we are speaking of the consent agenda, I believe we are up. Yes.
Item D, other reports? After public safety?
Let me see, oh, here we go. I see other reports, but I don't have anything under other report.
I just wanted to report, just to remind everyone, Beautify Bonnie Lake is this Saturday.
Oh, it is.
So, 7:30, if you're a team lead, go up, you can visit the website beautifybonnylake.org and sign up there, email will come directly to me, and I'll assign you a site if you haven't, if you haven't done so, but it's the 20th year.
20th year, yes.
20th year this has been going on, so.
We'll definitely point that out on Saturday.
Yeah, so a great opportunity to come serve your community, and I just didn't want to let this opportunity pass without reminding everyone.
No, absolutely.
If you're a tool that day, come see me, I've got tools.
I'm the tool man.
Well, it's not the tools, it's the shirt. Double X and save one for me.
Are you a team lead? Because the team, well, the team leads are, what are they, tie dye this year? They're separate from...
Oh, very unique this year, team leaders. Well, that, that wouldn't be bad. Last year, I was, I actually went around to the different sites, passing out different equipment and all.
I see you as a tie dye guy.
Yeah, well, I don't know if that's a compliment or not.
Depends how you like it.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now we can move to the consent agenda.
So we did need a couple of items removed off of that.
Uh, yes.
Item G, which was mentioned previously, and then I believe item I, because we haven't actually appointed those people yet, right? We need to pick who those are or not, is that correct?
You're right.
I believe so.
No, I, we have...
I believe in the agenda bill, it's the deputy city attorney prosecutor, and then the backup, the alternate would be the prosecutor.
Oh, okay, if it's already predefined, then that's fine.
That's in the agenda bill.
Okay.
Okay, so we are not pulling item I, we are, there has been a motion to pull item G from the, from the consent agenda. Do I hear any motions? And second? Okay, no discussion, hearing, no discussion, all in favor of pulling item G from the consent agenda for September 12th, 2023. Do I hear, all in favor, say aye.
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 Ah, very good. And Councilmember Fullerton, I didn't hear an aye or not, I saw a thumbs up.
Thumbs up there.
Aye.
All right, so item G is pulled from the, from the consent agenda tonight, so do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
Just a point of order, it's not just pulled, it's moved to open discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
My mistake on that one. We are moving it to open discussion, so as far as the consent agenda as adopted, I did hear a motion, did I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, very good. All in favor of adopting the newly revised consent agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we do have a six to one vote on the consent agenda, so now, since we pulled it, do we discuss that now, or should we move to the finance issue?
I'm going to let you go to first.
We'll do the finance issue, okay. We do have a finance issue. Madam Clerk, could you read the motion, please?
This is Agenda Bill 23-134, motion 23-134. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding with Mount Rainier Athletic Club, Inc., regarding a potential public-private partnership for the use of the city's property located at 7109-7111, Arcubine Road East, Buckley, Washington, 98321.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Evans.
We had a lengthy discussion on this in Finance Committee. It came out of Finance Committee, two to one, to move forward. I was no on that. I'd sent you guys all out an email last night on some of the reasoning for it. Doug, Mr. Clevenger was, was at the Finance Committee today, and he sent out an email to everyone as well, and he was able to provide some of the answers I was looking for. We were able to still clear some up in that same, that same timeframe, but I personally would, I'm, well, before I say what I'm going to say, there were some other developments that, that came about during that with a potential buy option rather than a lease option, or a buy, buyout direct option. I would like to see that come forward before doing this MOU, just so that that is an option on the table. I know we can make an amendment to the MOU, I'd like to see it in there separately. I would like to make a motion to postpone this until at a time we can have that information provided to us, and, and a little more information from, from MRAC on some of the questions I had.
Okay, do we have any further discussion before we make the motion? Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regards to that, I would recommend that we do not delay and put this off. There are grants that the MRAC wants to go for. We discussed this, well, we discussed it several months ago, almost three months ago now, and we finally got some action and got moving recently, and it's, everything's moving forward the way it should. This is an opportunity for them to put in for grants, they're like, just a million dollars and whatnot, by the end of September, so further delay just delays everything. We can do amendments if we decide that there's something in here we don't like, we've had the opportunity to look it over, if there's anything in there. Questions, some questions have been answered, obviously not all of them, but this is a first step. A lot of this stuff has to, we have to have meetings in order to fish some, or figure out some of this stuff. And so I think we're kind of putting, I think we can put the cart before the horse and asking for all the information, when we can't get the information, because we can't have a meeting, because we don't have an MOU. So the first step is to get the MOU, so that we can get together and start having these meetings, and flush out the actual information. So I would recommend that we continue and not postpone.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Councilmember Baldwin.
Before we go on, John, it looked like you had a question.
I thought it was a motion to table.
Yeah, it was a... He didn't actually put one out yet.
Okay. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't moved on.
Unless you did.
I did, yeah.
Oh, you did.
That's what I was speaking to.
Okay, so now we'll move to the motion to table.
Yeah, if there was...
There's no second for what is due.
Do we have a second?
Well, is, if it's a table, do we need a second, or is that?
Yes, you have to have a second.
I think you do.
There's just no discussion.
No discussion, that was the...
Can we discuss it more before we decide to table it?
Well, we haven't got a second yet, so. Well, you know, I'm, if I speak, I'm out of order.
Do we have our parliamentarian here? Does it look like we have our...
Rosemary's on.
Oh, okay. Rosemary, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. We can hear you, Rosemary.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You, you do need a second before you can continue with further discussion on the motion to postpone.
Okay. And do we have a second to the motion to table?
The motion to discuss?
No, the motion to table, this discussion.
He just wants to...
I, I will second, I will second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember McLehman, we do have a second at this point, so now we can discuss.
No, I...
No, it's without discussion.
Rosemary, can you clarify that there's no discussion on a motion to table?
Oh, that was the problem with that.
That's, yeah, okay.
Well, I understood this as a, it was a motion to postpone until you have further, the further information that you needed.
Is there a way that we can continue to discuss right now?
Well, no. Don't we need to vote?
Yes, you should, yes, you need to, you need to vote on the motion that's pending, which is to, the motion was to postpone until you can have the information for having the options in the MOU.
But we can't, we can't discuss the motion?
That's the problem.
Well, you've, you've had some discussion in already, actually.
Not on the motion, though.
And that's true, so right now, we have a motion to postpone.
Which would stop discussion.
On the, yes, on the table until we get further information. So let's vote on that. All in favor of the motion to postpone, say aye.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, though?
Yes.
If I withdraw my motion at this moment, and Kelly withdraws his, so we can have the discussion, and then I make the motion again, would that, would that suffice?
Ms. Larson, what do you, is that something, that would suffice?
If both the maker of the motion and the second withdraw it, then the original motion, well, actually, I don't even, I don't think there's been the original motion made yet, but you can then continue with talking about the MOU.
Okay.
I withdraw my original motion, so we can discuss further in, after the, because we've already been seconded on, on the original.
I second withdrawing the motion to table.
It has to be Kelly.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kelly has...
Yeah, I withdraw, I withdraw.
Okay. All right, so now we're back to the original motion that has been moved for and seconded, so now, do we have any discussion? Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot of concerns that are going forward about this. I think bringing this forward so they can at least start working on, see how we can develop this, because we need to have more athletic fields in Bonnie Lake, need to start someplace. I realize the concern about the money of the property, the concern about how they can finance it all, how they can work out, but without this being approved, they can't start working at all, and they haven't access to grants right now. Once we approve this, and they can grab those grants, if they don't come through within a lot of time, I discussed that last night, that they don't, I want to make sure that we have a two-year project. If they don't come forward in two years, this project is all canceled, but we need to give them something to run with, see what they can develop out of it, because again, I've talked for 12 years, I told the finance, I'm trying to get fields in Midtown Park, we haven't got any there, anywhere yet, and, and now you, the kids are asking someplace to go to do sports, activities, you've got pickleball, which adults are playing like crazy, there's an opportunities for have us, have something out there for them to do that, and if we don't do something, they're going to go away and go someplace else, because they're developing fields all over the Northwest. So if Bonnie Lake doesn't want to do it, there's more people out there ready, say, hey, come to our city, we'll do, take care of it, and then what do we have left? Where are we going to go next year? We don't have any money to do in town, we're going to be just like we were 10 years ago, 12 years ago. Oh, God, people, I can't understand why you can't at least go forward with the MOU and see what he wants to do for us, what he can do it. If he can't afford it, he can't make it work out, then thank you real well, and move on. If he wants to buy the property, as Justin was kind of alluding to, maybe later on, great, that may be an opportunity too we might look at, but we haven't looked at those things yet. Need to approve this, go forward, and do what he can do. We can all walk away from it if we need to, make sure it's an opportunity that way.
Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, I highly, highly respect Deputy Mayor Carter and Councilmember Evans' just ability to be able to sift through things and to have ideas, very much, very much trust their discernment in the process moving forward, and so I guess my question is, especially because I know that Councilmember Evans is not against, you know, the idea, he's just, he's looking at, he's just really good at looking at the details of things, and so I get that, and I also know that, obviously, what Deputy Mayor Carter is saying, and that things are becoming stunted as a result of not moving forward with the MOU, and so I guess my question is, to Councilmember Evans, are there parts on the MOU that, that do concern you or bother you, that you feel like you would prefer to have it removed, for example, because I know that's one of the things that we were just saying, is if the MOU was dot, 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 that there are things on there, so are there specific things on there that are concerning to you that you prefer not to have on the MOU?
Yeah, but they're the key essentials of it, and that would break the whole thing apart, and that is the public funding, because as this sits right now, the current REED property sits under the ownership, and while it sits under the ownership of the city of Bonnie Lake, it doesn't, it sits under the ownership of the water and water utility. Water utility cannot make any agreement with, with MRAC, so the only way they can do that is if the city entity purchases from general funds that property at current market value, not what we paid for it years ago, but current market value from the water utilities. So only after that can we really have that, that ability to work with them. Now, that's not holding up the MOU, but that is spending public funds for a public-private venture that I don't even know how much is public and how much is private. So I would like to see, like I said, that, I love the idea of it, I think the concept is great, I'm not opposed to the park at all, it's, that, that is not my point of contention at all. It's, the organization has been around for less than a year. The organization that it previously, the entity that it previously existed under operated in the red for the last decade, doing the same thing. Now, you know, there may be a lot of opportunities where that red can turn black, and I just want to see how that actually pencils out. This is in the county, this is not in the city, we would have to annex it, we'd have to police it, we would have to do, we'd have to make sure that, that the MRAC is held accountable for the maintenance and operation of it. They don't even know what it's going to cost yet, not even a ballpark idea, let alone what they have available to spend for it. If you're shopping, and I've used this analogy before, you're shopping for a new car, you kind of got to know what you're willing to spend, and you kind of got to know what you want, how much it costs. Now, you don't have to know the exact dollar amount before you go in and start shopping, but you, you do have to kind of have some ideas in mind, and I kind of want to see some skin in the game from MRAC, that they're willing to do some of the legwork ahead of this, preliminary rendering, some sort of idea that, you know, what they're looking at actually providing. One field, eight fields, six fields... One field, eight fields, six fields, pickleball, basketball, you know, and again, I'm not looking for, this is going to be in this location at this angle, I, just a concept. I don't, if they have a concept, it hasn't been presented well enough to me for me to be comfortable spending the public's money on, on this yet. And I say the public's money because part of the thing that in that agreement would be, we'd have to figure out a way to purchase that from the utility. Now, what came about in finance was the opportunity for them to possibly buy that outright, completely eliminating the city portion of it, which at that point, I would be 100% good. Because at the end of the day, whatever, whatever we do with that property, we're going to be funding the utility, the water utility, whether it comes from the public here in the general fund, or whether it comes from the county buying it direct, whether it comes from MRAC buying it direct, or whether it comes from the developer sitting next door wanting to expand and build more homes over there. At the end of the day, utilities are going to be fine. That, that money can go help pay down the debt on our public work center, it can do a couple other things, and that will, you know, maybe trickle down to, to the water rates and sewer rates that we keep talking about. So that, that side is going to. Be the, the general fund. If we already had it in the general fund, if, if we purchased this property with general fund money, it wouldn't even be a point of contention for me, because we done, we wouldn't have to buy it from ourselves at a inflated rate from what we paid for it, you know? Ideally, this should be a quick claim deed that we can just transfer over and maybe transfer over the million dollars that we paid out of the, the utility fund for it. If that were the case, no, no big deal. But being that we have to buy our own property from ourselves with public money at an inflated rate is really difficult for me to swallow. Now, nothing against them, the, the idea is grand, I think it would be great, I'm certain my daughter would be over there, I'm certain I'd be out playing pickleball. The, the concept, the MRAC, I don't have any problem with what they're attempting to do here, but moving forward, if this MOU gets signed, it's going to trigger everything in that section to start happening, and everything in that section costs money. And if I'm not comfortable knowing that they can finance that whole project from the first turn of the shovel to the cutting of the ribbon, I don't feel comfortable in spending a dime doing the research to figure that out. I think, I think they're, they're smart enough to be able to say, this is what we anticipate it costing, this is what we have to spend, and having some contingency plans in there, and just presenting it. You know, I, I haven't seen a real presentation, I apologize, I missed a couple weeks ago when we had that discussion, because a lot of these items would have probably come up from me during that time, but I'm, I'm just not satisfied that the work has been done yet for, for this. If some other company came to us and said, we've been around for nine months, we want you to use your money to buy a property from yourself, and we want to do X on it, I don't know that we would be at this point considering this with the information we've already been provided by them. Maybe, maybe later down the road, because this, this to me is not a no, it's just, show me, satisfy me, show me that this is in the best interest of me spending the, the money of the people that, that we took it from, you know? How is that going to best benefit them? So that's, that's all I'm asking for, is just more detail. You know, this is the same timeframe that we got with the Parks and Rec program eight years ago, and that was a bad decision there because we had to react because of someone else's emergency or someone else's timeline. And I think this is a good idea, it's all a matter of timing, is, is now the right time for that? You know, and, and I understand that there, there's a possibility of losing out on grants that may or may not be given yet or, or awarded, you know, because my knowledge, they're, they're still in application process. So they, they may lose out if they, if we miss a deadline, but there's no guarantee that that grant was going to happen anyway. So, you know, that, that's just everything. I, I've really struggled with this, because I do agree with the, the top-level concept, but at the end of the day, I got to be responsible for what the people put me here for, and I'm just not seeing that detail yet that makes me comfortable.
Now, I do have a point of clarification, Councilmember Evans. You, you stated inflated rate, but you've also used the term fair market value. Do you just mean the increased rate of the fair market value?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you and your wife had two properties and one was in your wife's name, and she bought it for 100 grand 20 years ago and wanted to move it to your name, but now it's worth $2 million, you don't want to pay $2 million for that property, especially if it's in the same household. You want to quick claim deed that, and maybe if, you know, if there's a lender that owes, is still owed the balance, pay that off, but.
No, I do understand.
Yeah, that, that, so to me, that's, you know, not racketeering, but profiteering, I don't know.
All right, Councilmember Baldwin.
Okay, so I'm really struggling with this as well, hearing everybody's thoughts. I guess what it boils down to for me is the, the risk right now with just an MOU, I mean, an MOU is not a contract. I mean, it's, it is, but it's not, right? It's not a legally binding contract, and so really, the risk, the ball of risk is in your court, it's in MRAC's court. And so I feel like in signing an MO, and believe me, I agree with everything you're saying, that there is a level of risk and a lack of information. But when you're talking about something that if we're just, if we're just saying, okay, MOU, let's say, worst-case scenario, we start to move forward, they start to get some answers because that's what they need, right, in order to move forward and get answers, so they don't, they can't give us answers without that. And then let's say their plan just falls apart, they don't actually come up with something that's viable, something that we are willing to take a risk on, the loss just is theirs. I feel like the loss is just then in their court. And as a council, we can then, at that point, make a decision and say with certainty, a little bit more certainty, right, that it looks like this is not working out, right? Things are not coming through and, and falling through. And so for me, that is what I'm basing my decision off of, if, if we decide anything, is that I'm okay with moving forward with the MOU simply because, again, it is not a legally binding agreement, and the ball of risk is absolutely in MRAC's court. And so I am willing to see what it is that they have to offer, and then, and then at that point, if they end up dropping the ball, we have, we don't have as much, I guess, skin in the game, and I'm okay with taking that risk.
Oh, sorry. Every third year. Yeah, absolutely. You know what I mean?
I am. All right, well.
Hey, it's good seeing you.
Holy shit, what meeting is this?
This is my city council meeting.
Kelly, you've got your, your mic on.
He's got it.
All right.
I got my hand up.
Councilmember Watson. Councilmember Polson, you have a comment?
Yes. Am I interrupting Councilmember Watson?
No.
Okay.
No, you were, you were first, Councilmember Polson.
Okay, yeah, so I, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Baldwin and Deputy Mayor Carter. I, I don't see the risk in allowing, because without the MOU, MRAC is just a duck out of water, they can't do anything, period. They can't move forward, they can't give us any more answers, it's basically, it's going to kill anything. So at least let them attempt to get the financing that they need in the ways that they need to do it. This is not a contract, this is simply allowing them to apply for grants and money because they have a commitment to talk with the city and, and move forward. So I'm, I'm for this MOU.
Thank you, Councilmember Polson, Councilmember Watson.
Just real quick, in finance, I said I want a two-year deadline on this project, but they don't complete what they have to do with this property in two years, it all goes away, it's done. They can't drag us out for three or four years.
That's. The MOU is one year.
With the MOU, yeah.
The term of the MOU is one year.
Yeah.
Okay. And there are city deliverables, so if this MOU does pass, if you look at that Section 2.2, you know, we will, we will initiate a municipal purposes annexation, we will look at ways to transfer the property from the water fund to the general fund, there are another, other deliverables that we are as a city committing to, and the attorney can certainly weigh in, as I'm, well, as imagine the mayor can, this is a legally binding document.
And Deputy Mayor Carter? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And there are, that's, that's correct, and each of those things, should any money come up, will come back to the council for a vote at that time. So each time we go through this, we're going to continue going down this road, right? And we get to make some decisions as we go along here. This is the opportunity that no, I don't see a lot of other places getting. This is an opportunity to actually move forward, doing something with parks that the city has wanted to do since I came here in 2000, and we really haven't done a lot. We've done a little bit with Allen York Park, but this is an opportunity that's very unique. And this, this is a, this works with somebody who, I know you said, like, their business has been in, in nine months, but he's done other businesses, a lot of other businesses. He happened to open this specifically, I think, to do this job, right? So the other, the other MRFC, I know it operated a loss, it's a nonprofit, like, that's what it does, right? So it's, it's okay. Businesses, his businesses that actually act as businesses make money. So he's operating this one as a business that would potentially move forward, it would give us a lot of opportunities, he's looking at doing other things for us with the rec program potentially, maybe not, we don't know, right? We have to go through this process and talk, and this is my, my biggest thing, I guess. This council now is big on talking, which is great, we need to talk these things out, right? But at the same time, we have to give the city staff authority to actually talk to some of these organizations so they can come up with some answers. This is a baby step. This is our first step, and we have to get the first step to move forward, we need to build some momentum. Building that momentum is here tonight with an MOU they've brought forward, they're taking all the risk, really, I feel, I know we have to come up with something eventually and, and potentially spend, you know, millions of dollars to move money from one pot to another from, to, to take care of the water fund, but they're taking a huge risk, and they're paying out a ton of money. And if they lose out on it, we end up still with the property. So we really don't end up with a loss of much at all. And so that's where I'm not, I'm seeing the disconnect, I guess. And so I would just, again, say that this is an opportunity that only comes around for this city probably once in a generation. So let's take an opportunity to be bold and do something creative that's going to have a great public use for our citizens.
All right, Councilmember Evans.
I, I won't make a strong-arm vote, because as much as I'm against this, it, it is the right of everyone here should have their voice heard. If, if there is one that is, is motioned, I will second it, but I, I won't make that motion again. But it does start costing us money, and, and, and you're right, the, the owner of this corporation has been successful in business, he owned several businesses, but in the end, the MOU is with the MRAC, and that's really all that we can go on, is, is that. Now, I have the potential of $250 million in my pocket, because I have a lottery ticket in there, but that doesn't mean that that potential is realized, and I can't start going out and doing things with that, because I think I can, I can do things with it. So like I said, I love the idea, I love the concept. For me, it's just, it's, it's, it's not half-baked, it's, it's just not, it's not fully realized to me yet. I, I understand the risk that they're going to be taking, we, we've dealt with similar risks before where, where previous entities had wanted to purchase land and, and were at much greater risk in doing so prior to us even agreeing to a developer's agreement with them. So I understand that, I, I think that they haven't risked anything yet, and I would like to see a little more of a commitment to that. The, the email we received today with the, with the escrow fund is, you know, just a drop in the bucket of what, you know, we would need to see, or what I personally would need to see in order to want to move forward this. But like I said, I'm going to be a no on this, I won't, I won't motion to, to table if someone does, I would support that, but at the end of the day, I think I've said my piece.
Excuse me?
Mr. Mayor?
You bought the ticket?
That's the first step.
Kelly's trying to.
Is, maybe Kelly was.
Oh, well, yeah, I don't, I don't see, Councilmember McLeibman said.
I thought maybe he was next, I don't recall.
I don't. Councilmember Polson.
Mr. Mayor? I'm a chair. I, I have two questions. Of course, the first question's going to be, what if, what if we don't pass this tonight, what happens?
We are going to put that as part of the agenda, every agenda, Councilmember Polson.
So if we don't pass it, is it?
I guess I can answer that. If we don't pass it tonight, then, I don't know, potentially it comes back at the future, potentially it doesn't. The, this is an opportunity here to move forward, and if we, I guess if we don't want to pass it, then I'm guessing they'll look somewhere else to go work with someone else. Yeah, I think, I think really that's, that's your answer, unfortunately.
The time constraint, or on the grants, is that at the end of September, Deputy Mayor, I believe you mentioned something?
Yeah, September 29th, I believe.
Okay. All right, and Councilmember Swan.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
That was one of two.
Oh, one of two.
I, yeah, I had one more question. So it's my understanding that the Reed property has already been surplus, and the city was already in the process of, of, of hopefully selling the property, is that correct?
You are correct, the property has been surplus for a number of years now, the resolution that declared it surplus, I directed the mayor and myself to accept any offers for purchase and bring those forward to the full council, we have not yet had any offers, offers for purchase on the Reed property. We have a appraisal that was completed the end of August, however, that would be disclosed in executive session, which I believe, depending on where this goes, we may have an executive session next Tuesday.
Okay. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember McLeibman, Councilmembers.
Yeah, no, I appreciate everyone for bringing this information forward, I have not been in many of the discussions, and I'm still trying to figure out, because there's, there was mention of the MRAC, right? Is that?
Mount Rainier Athletic Club.
That's a newly created entity or something like that?
Yeah, four-profits created in November of last year.
Okay, so it's brand-new on that.
So not a 301C?
501C.
501C.
Because the, the one that, you know, I run across, associated with that is, is, are not, is the Mount Rainier.
Football club.
Nonprofit. That's the other corporation that's been in for longer, so why did they create a new corporation to do this activity, or there's something else? Why not, why didn't they do it under the existing, you know?
So I.
I don't know.
We have somebody in the audience who are willing to allow him to speak, who can probably tell us that.
Why don't you come on up?
Because, because I was initially worried about the clarification of, you know, the process, that I appreciate it went to committee and all, and I was hoping it would get to at least a workshop, or there'd be a good discussion, and more specifically, that the public could have their input on top of it, type of a thing, but I know there's a timing issue we're working with, so.
Yeah, to close your.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, the reason that MRAC was started was, Mount Rainier Football Club was, is just purely a football club, wanted to start MRAC to bring in other sports. Since starting, we provided a flag, we're our second.
No one can hear her.
Oh, he's too tall? You're too tall?
No one can hear you.
Does it, does it?
Microphone out.
Yeah, I feel like it comes out.
It does.
All makes sense.
Well, no, just slides up.
My office, Dan.
Slides up. Sorry.
I mean, that works, too, but.
Yeah, so we started MRAC as an idea to bring in other sports, just because we saw their sports as a potential to join us. We were in the community talking to some of these other entities, and they were having the same troubles we were when we were small, and that is, you know, you, you get caught up in all of the administrative things, so you're not out there on the field doing the work that you want to do, that you joined the club to do. So we wanted to get more of the coaches and more of the sports out on the field, and fewer of the coaches in behind the scenes trying to do the work. So that was kind of our effort, and then it has just snowballed into a lot of different ideas, and this being the biggest. So MRAC was started to branch out into some of the other sports and move out into the community, and, and also to, to compete as a business, not just as a nonprofit, which, right, Mr. Knowles came in about eight years ago, he wanted to run this as a business, so we would. wanted to run this as a business. So we would have the ability to have have MRAC continue, not just now, not just till he was done, but into the future for a long time.
Another question. Yeah, sure. Since you're here, if I may, I haven't been in most of the discussions. So as Councilmember Baldwin points out, there's a significant risk on your guys' part, right, for all these deliverables that we're looking at on that. I guess you guys are okay with that because, you know, from my perspective, and and I've you've probably heard me throw it at the lawyers multiple many times, you know, I'm like, probably zero possibility of me paying $5 million to use this property, right? Because that's what you'd have to do, maybe whatever the price is for the appraisal, which I don't know. You know, that that seems to be a significant ask on the city of Bonnie Lake citizens to do that kind of an activity. I don't, you know, and it's not, see, there's a risk on your side of doing all those other deliverables because I'm saying, I don't know what they're going to end up doing, you know. I don't want you to look at me badly because I I'm, you know, you realize that I'm a, you know, multi-decade member of board member of the Bonny Lake Little League, right? So there's no probably bigger proponent of fields and athletics on this particular council than myself, right? I want this to happen. I I want you guys to know the risks involved of, you know, I'm not going to give $5 million to you to make it happen, right? Yeah, that's my.
Yeah.
Sure.
And I I measure my risk not.
That's just me.
Right. No, I can appreciate.
There could be four other council members that are like, yeah, give them millions.
Yeah, well, we're counting on the lottery ticket. We've already heard about it. So.
I was hypothetical. I don't even have a ticket.
Well, somebody might. So I measure my risk based on what Scott feels comfortable with, with Mr. Knowles feels comfortable with, because some of these numbers, some of the things that I hear, I'm not comfortable with. But then I get on the phone with him, and I talk it through with him. And he has a he has a very different view, very different perspective on how things can be accomplished. He knows what it takes to start a business in his garage, and probably many. And then some will fail, some will succeed. You focus on your successes. And he has done a good job of that. So when I talk to him and I measure the risk, and he's comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. Because at the end of the day, you know, if if he's not comfortable with the risk, Doug's out of a job. And that's not a good situation for me. So I I make sure that that I understand what it is that we're doing. And I make sure that I understand how he feels about it. One of the things that I look at as well is, you know, this decision was made that we're all kind of bound to 20 years ago, to buy it in what department, and it was none of you, and it was not me. And so now we're just left to dealt with to deal with, I'm sorry, the consequences of of that decision, whether you stand on the side of it's good, it's indifferent, or it's bad. And so, you know, I don't want to take the responsibility for that. I I just want to look at what's possible, and it's possible to do this thing. And I'd love to act on that. But I understand the history. I understand the concern. I'm also a taxpayer. I'm in it. So, you know, I I just want to kind of moderate that. We can't continue to, at least I don't think we can continue to to look at it in that way. And certainly, our club is not to, if we prolong this, it's probably going to get more expensive to do. And, you know, making the decision now, who knows what kind of money we save. It's been 20 years, nobody's bought it. We're here now. We're ready to go. So hopefully, that answers some of your questions.
Doug, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Last last time you were here, you said that Scott was going to show up at our next meeting, not not tonight's meeting, but at our next meeting. Is still correct? Depending on how this motion turns out today, but will Scott be here next time?
He and I discussed it, and I believe he he would be. He's also talked about hosting something out of the property for one of the one of the discussions in between. I can't remember if it's a workshop or one of the council meetings. So, you know, he's quite aware of that. He's also aware of the the dates. I think it was October 10. And I've talked through that. I think I talked through that with him the next day. So yes, he's he's made a commitment to meet with individually or collectively with this group.
All right, thank you. Do we have any further discussion before we vote on the matter? Councilmember Baldwin.
I just want to add maybe one more encouragement that may be helpful, maybe not. When I went to the AWC conference, Jill Bedrow, who is the mayor of Mount Vernon, had basically gone and undertook a very large project, which was a public and private partnership. It was very risky. And she explained the stages and the pieces, the the partners involved. And there wasn't a whole lot of answers in the beginning. The project ended up becoming it was it was this big dream and idea in her mind that and she was aligned with basically idea people as well. And, you know, a lot of people had doubted that they were going to be able to accomplish what they did. But what they ended up doing is revitalizing their entire downtown while creating a flood protection wall. And it is beautiful. It's a beautiful project. It it cost $31 million. And it was in pieces. It was in phases. But it it was accomplished. And so I guess I'm just looking at this at the fact that there are going to be things in government that aren't always going to have all of the answers upfront. And this is an opportunity, again, for us to find out some of the answers. And yes, based on, you know, the fact that there are deliverables, obviously, that does cost money because manpower and hours, we can't pretend like that doesn't cost money because it does. But again, I'm just looking at, I know we're talking about millions of dollars that we can spend to buy the property outright. I think it's super odd. It is like the married couple buying it later for a higher cost, which I don't appreciate at all. But I do think that in comparison, if we were to build something comparable in Bonnie Lake, it's going to cost way more so for us. So that that's also what I'm looking at in in my decision. So.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin, Councilmember, and then Councilmember Watson.
And then, like I said, I totally want to see this happen. I totally don't want to see us pay money from our general fund. Just just an idea, if if what even remotely close, what Councilmember Swatman was saying at $5 million, that would make, let's see here, so five, 10, that would make our Parks and Rec program solvent for over 25 years.
Councilmember Watson.
This is a way for us to show what we can do with outside source or private entity. And if this does work, Midtown Park will also be able to go that way forward, too. As I've said before, the finances, it probably won't happen elsewhere with some deep pockets to help finance that. And if we see how this would transpire and make it take shape, then who knows what will come to Midtown Park going forward. That's the way, because I know you don't want to tax anyone for Midtown Park, might be able to get away from that and be able to have it built anyway. We need more ball fields also, need a new amphitheater out there. We need to get away from Allen York Park, and this might be our first step forward for five years from now, maybe doing some of Midtown Park for us, too.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Watson. All right.
I have I have one last thing.
Okay.
I'm sorry. The other thing to consider, too, just as, you know, members of the community, I used to always think, when government was dragging their feet and taking forever, I I didn't want to be taxed more. My question was always, move money, move my money around that you already have to make it work. And that's essentially what we will be doing. So just just another thought.
And Councilmember Fullerton?
Yeah, we literally just spent a few million dollars, I won't mention how much, to build a brand-new park at Allen York Park, which we're now actively renting out, and we have extra parking and everything else. The city is benefiting from that. So this actually is going to cost less than building one ballpark. And we're going to literally have different sports, different fields. We're going to have possibly even a center for teens to be able to go to, or, you know, senior centers, whatever, whatever we can do. I mean, the sky's the limit on what can happen here with potentials. So I see this, even if it does end up costing out of the general fund, it's going to be for the benefit of the people. It's not like we're taking money away from the people. We're literally putting it towards the community, towards parks. We're putting it towards what the people have been wanting and asking for for years. So, I mean, hopefully, there's grants and there's ways that we can get around having to purchase the property out of the city coffers. But, you know, that's something that we can look at after MOUs and and more talks and everything else have happened. But we've literally been talking about this since, I believe, July. So this isn't something that just popped up and, oh, we have to vote on this like right now, or everything's going to, you know, be crazy because we don't know anything. I mean, we've been talking about it for for three months already. So, and I I don't think it's it's that big of a commitment at this point to at least be able to get some answers and get some ideas on how we can move forward. And if if it all comes to a halt, it all comes to a halt. But it's going to be dependent on financing and this particular MOU being signed and agreed upon. So in order to do anything to move forward. So that's all I've got to say about that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Fullerton. So are we ready to take it to a vote? So all in favor of motion M. 23-134, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so let's six to one. That motion M. 23-134 has been passed. Now we move to item G from the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you read that resolution, please?
This is Agenda Bill AB 23130, Resolution 3179. The council motion would be to authorize the mayor to approve the purchase of a new tractor and mower for the street department.
Don't move. Second.
Do we have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Swatman?
Yeah, maybe we could have the staff have a little background on this because they there was some conflicting information we had at the committee level, wanted to make sure the council got the whole story on that.
Do we have information? Mr. Johnstone?
Yes, sir. Oh. I'm going to the corded microphone. Roll old school here. Thank you again. So a little bit of backstory here. The 2324 BIA budget included $189,942 to replace two pieces of equipment that had reached the end of their service life. What Councilmember Swatman is mentioning is during the CDC meeting, I had said at that time, I had misunderstood a conversation I had had with CFO Ryerson about monies that were potentially available to make up the difference in what we need to now purchase the equipment. I had thought that there was remaining funds available in the ERNR budget to complete that purchase. When I talked to her the next morning, I realized that I had misunderstood what she had said. And so I sent out an email to the members who were there that evening stating that actually, if this goes is approved to go through the budget amendment process, those funds to make up the difference between the budgeted number and what it is now being quoted as costing us will have to come from the street department. It will not come from the ERNR fund. So that was the clarifying statement, I think, that Councilmember Swatman was alluding to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnstone. Councilmember?
Just, how did this end up through CDC and not Finance?
I was kind of curious about that myself.
You know, I I
Through easier?
I I I usually pick my committees based on, yeah, and who's going to.
It's a mower.
No, I think honestly, it was just it was just technically, it was probably an oversight, and I just put it on the CDC agenda, moved it forward without thinking about it.
So should it go to the Oversight Committee then?
Right, yeah, exactly. Back circle around, yeah. It's it's just going to cost more if we wait, of course. I just wanted to make sure, you know, because there was different information there that everybody knew that they didn't come back because we were referencing that the funds will have to be transferred in the future. So that when that issue comes forward, they're like, wait a minute, that's not what you told us. So.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on the on the matter? All in favor of Resolution 3179? Seventy-nine, I put a line through, I'm sorry. Say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
We have
Kelly wasn't there.
We have a six to one approval for Resolution 3179. I don't believe we have any more business except for our executive committee, so we are adjourned. There is no, okay. All right. So seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Must be in the bars.
So is there an executive meeting or no?
No.
No. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.